All right, I'm going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for November 18th, 2025. The time is 7:55 PM. Vice Chair Izant, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand, place your hand over your heart, and read after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please? Commissioner McNally.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Commissioner Flaherty.
Here.
Vice Chair Person Izant.
Here.
Chair Person Hirsch.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, moving on to item number four, approval of the agenda. This is the time for the Planning Commission to discuss any changes to the order of agenda items. Does anyone have something to discuss?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I could, I would recommend we move up on the agenda, item number 7D, to hear first.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner McNally.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Flaherty.
Yes.
Vice Chair Person Izant.
Yes.
Chair Person Hirsch.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item number five, public comment. This is time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any items within the Commission's jurisdiction and on items where public comment will not be taken. The public's invited to attend and provide public comment. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker from those present in the council chambers and via the remote participation options listed on the agenda. This time allotment may be modified due to time constraints at the discretion of the chair. As a reminder, no action will be taken on matters raised in oral and communications, except that the Planning Commission may take action to schedule issues raised during public comment for a future agenda. Speakers with comments regarding departmental operations are encouraged to submit those comments directly to the Community Development Director or to the Office of the City Manager. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to speak during this public comment portion of the meeting? Seeing none, I'll see if there's anyone online.
There are no online guests wishing to speak.
Great. Then I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and move on to item number six, the consent calendar. The following matters will be acted upon collectively with a single motion and vote to approve with a majority consent of the Planning Commission. Commissioners may orally register a negative vote on any consent calendar item without pulling the item for separate consideration before the vote on the consent calendar. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the commissioner removes an item from the consent calendar, either under approval of the agenda or under this item before the vote on the consent calendar. Items removed for separate discussion will be provided a separate public comment here, period. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and was it seconded twice? Did you get that, Jake? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner McNally.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Flaherty.
Yes.
Vice Chair Person Izant.
Yes.
Chair Person Hirsch.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we're now going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, starting with item number 7D, the Precise Development Plan, PDP 23-06, for the remodel of an existing two-story, single-family residence and remodel of an existing two-car garage with a second-floor workshop into a residence with four garage parking spaces, case number 25-CCD-163. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do.
Sorry. Take it away, Kanika. You're walking on two legs today.
I am. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Kanika Pompey, and I will be delivering the presentation for the item this evening. Next slide, please. The request before you, as stated in the agenda, is for a precise development plan for the remodel of an existing two-story, single-family residence and remodel of an existing two-car garage with second-floor workshop into a second residence with four garage parking spaces, and to determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide, please. The project site is an existing 6,538-square-foot interior lot located in the southeastern portion of the city, east of Pacific Coast highways and west of Prospect Avenue. The site has a general plan land use designation of medium density in its own limited multiple-family residential. Next slide. The site is currently developed with a 3,457-square-foot, two-story, single-family home and with an attached 652-square-foot garage with a second-floor workshop. Next slide. The applicant proposes to remodel the existing 3,457-square-foot, two-story, single-family residence and remodel of an attached 642-square-foot garage with second-floor workshop into two new, single-family residences with four garage parking spaces. Next slide, please. So the project was reviewed for compliance with all local development standards and comply. Some standards to make note of is the parking. So the property currently has four parking spaces, two located in the existing garage and two guest parking spaces in the driveway. Pursuant to the Minnesota Beach Municipal Code, properties with two family dwellings require two off-street parking spaces for each unit plus one guest space. And the project proposes five parking spaces, so two parking spaces within a garage per dwelling unit and one guest parking space located adjacent to the garages. Next. The project was reviewed for compliance with the zoning code and general plan, and as such, the project's design, layout, and other physical features are consistent with the city's municipal code, general plan, and development standards. Next slide, please. This report and associated recommendations have been evaluated for their consistency with the city's general plan. Some relevant policies include Policy 1.3 of the city's general plan, which strives to create development where residents are within walking distance from goods and services, and Policy 5.7, which strives to preserve nighttime views and lessen glare by minimizing lighting levels. Next slide. So here you can see a rendering of the final design. Next slide. So the project proposes adding 348 square feet to the existing garage. It would decrease the existing single-family dwelling by around 800 square feet, and then the second dwelling will be converting the workshop and adding a third story of 589 square feet. Additionally, per municipal code, 300 square feet of open space is required per dwelling unit, and the project proposes roughly 1,400 square feet of open space for dwelling unit one, which was the existing single-family dwelling, and about 580 square feet for the second, the newly created second unit. The project also proposes around 1,500 square feet of landscape, and all onsite landscaping will be subject to the water efficiency landscape ordinance of the city. Next slide, please. So here you can see what the change of the first-floor layout would be. For the dwelling one, they are altering the layout, and for the garage and the workshop, they will be adding 642 square feet to the garage to create a new two, new two-car garage per unit, so that will come up to 990 square feet. Next slide, please. For the second floor, for the first dwelling unit, the layout is also being changed, and then for the new residence, the workshop will be converted into a single-family residence consisting of one bedroom, one bathroom, and a living and dining room. Next slide, please. So the first dwelling will include a roof deck, and then the second dwelling will be adding a third floor, which will include an office and loft. Next slide, please. Here's the proposed east elevation for the dwellings, and both dwellings will be under the 30-foot maximum height limit for the zone. Next slide. Here's the proposed west elevation for both dwellings, and the development proposes a contemporary architectural style. Next slide. So this is the proposed south and north elevation of dwelling one, and so the project will use several different materials to break monotony and create visual interest. Next slide. And here's the proposed south and north elevation of dwelling two, and any rooftop equipment, if any proposed, will have to be screened from public view. Next slide, please. So pursuant to sequo, the proposed project qualifies for a Class I categorical exemption, which is for existing facilities, since the project proposes the remodel of existing dwelling and accessory structures. Next slide. For this meeting, a total of 283 public hearing notices were mailed to the occupants and property owners of properties within 300-foot radius on November 3rd. Additionally, a legal ad was published on November 6th, as well as the applicant received a notice poster to post onsite and provide a proof of posting a minimum of 10 days in advance of this public hearing. Next slide. So lastly, this brings us to staff recommendation. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the application and consider adopting a draft resolution for a precise development plan for the remodel of an existing two-story, single-family residence and remodel of an existing two-car garage with second-floor workshop into a second residence with four garage parking spaces. This concludes staff report. We're available to answer questions the commission may have, and the applicant is also available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions of staff at this time?
I do.
Okay.
I'm confused. I guess I've been confused all night. This isn't a condominium.
No.
According to the report.
No, it's a two-unit development.
It's a two-unit, single-family home. Explain that to me. That's a new concept to me.
So the property has an existing, single-family home with the accessory structure, the attached garage with the workshop on top. What they're proposing to do, if you kind of separate it, is remodel the existing, single-family home and then also convert that second-floor, the second-story workshop.
I got all of that. Who owns the second home?
At this point, I do not, we don't have who will be the new owner for that home.
If this is under single ownership, I can buy that this is a home that they've chosen to separate or whatever you want to call it. But the concern would be, for example, the parking for unit two, or whatever we're calling it, is in, we've never done that, to my knowledge, that we've ever allowed someone to count parking that doesn't belong to them for their required parking.
No, both units will have their own parking, so they're.
But their parking's in tandem in the first house, first dwelling unit, as it's labeled.
So the parking structure will be underneath the new created second structure, but it's creating two parking.
I got that. Who owns it?
And the code allows tandem.
I beg your pardon, but who owns, who owns that park, that parking? Who owns the ground floor of that unit?
The idea would be one garage would be for unit one and one garage would be for unit two.
I got that, but what I'm saying is, I can't count my neighbor's garage space as my space unless it's on my property or I own it.
Yeah, the whole property is owned by one property owner.
And why are we considering this two dwelling units? I don't get it. Like I say, maybe it's just the terminal. Is this just a, a single-family home that chose to have a big casita? I've got a house in the desert. We've got two dwelling units on our property, but it's not too how, it's, you know, is this a single-family home still or not when it's done, if we approve the project as it's presented to us?
As presented, it would be considered two, single-family homes.
But on one singular lot that's not condoed?
A single-family home implies the ownership of the property and the home. If you're telling me that the second home is going to be owned by whoever's the resident of that, that's a condominium, in which case we got to have a whole different use for this site or a whole different conditional use for this site, a CUP among other things. Otherwise, I don't see how I can count, consider this two homes, but one of them has all the parking. That's just, you know, we do that in condos, right, where they share the guest space, where they have a common driveway, but they own the property, but they got to park themselves. We do this for an apartment building, but we don't do this for single-family homes.
So you're saying that the, the back unit, if it's rented, needs the additional parking?
No. If it's under the same ownership and it's being rented, that's, I, but if you're calling, you know, this is, I'm confused again. Questions of staff at this point, and then I appreciate it if you're the representative.
Yeah, well, once we finish questions of staff, then we'll open it to the applicant for their presentation. Thank you. Should we put a pen in that question for now?
I just think like, as the code stands, the zoning allows for a two-unit development. It doesn't necessarily mandate that it has to be condo, condominiums.
But I'm sure, and I don't have that in front of me, that each of those two units would have to be parked separately if they're just under distinct ownership. Now, if they're remaining under the single ownership, and this is going to be the kids in the front and mom and dad in the back, or whatever combination, I get it. But short of that, I think I'm looking at a condominium or a multifamily development, in which case there's a different set of standards. So we'll, we'll wait for clarification from the owners.
If I could, Commissioner Hoffman, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kanika, but at this point, the owners are not asking to, for any kind of subdivision into condos. This is a single owner redeveloping their current lot into two different, single-family residential units, which is permitted under the code.
I got it.
I know, I know that's, that's not the rub here, but if it were to come before us in the future as a condo or as a subdivision, then we would, you know, consider the parking question. At this point, it is still under single ownership, and there, to our knowledge, there has been no request or no application from the property owner to subdivide the property.
Okay. And I'm trying to envision, and again, not in this specific case, but in the case like this, if then the immediate response is, of course, I'm going to sell this second property that I've now gotten developed, and I'll make an agreement with them about the part, that would, there's no remedy for us possible at that point. We then have created a that I've now gotten developed and I'll make an agreement with them about the part, that would, there's no remedy for us possible at that point. We then have created a non-conforming property and we try to avoid that.
Commissioner McNally, do you have any questions of staff? Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes. Have you counted this new unit as part of our Rena count? That would determine whether there's two units or not.
The, I believe all new units would be counted towards Rena.
It's an add one. It's a, would be a plus one.
Plus one. Digging a deeper hole.
If I could, but not as an ADU. Too big to be an ADU, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
I'd like to follow up on that. I mentioned before my anxiety about dealing with a commercial slash residential unit and how I felt the biggest problem was the problem of after it was approved and built and it turned out to be residential in the commercial area. So it violated every energy we had on increasing the viability of the commercial by putting the residential in there. If they sold this property, would they need city, if they sold the second unit, new unit, would they need city permission to do so? Is there a caveat in this document that prohibits that? I'm not saying sell the whole property, I'm just saying sell that.
There is no way at this moment in time to sell the, the structure separately because there hasn't been a subdivision.
Right. Okay.
And a subdivision would have to come to planning commission?
Okay.
Can you clarify, if it's not a subdivision and not a condo, what's the trigger for it coming to us now? I see that this is under the precise development plan. We, I just, we haven't, I'm trying to go through projects that we've reviewed in the past that are on single-family lots and it's only been for like slope and height determination. So what's triggering this to come here?
The square footage of the remodel and addition. So per the code, anything over 1,500 requires a precise development plan.
The square footage of the remodel of, of what? Like we don't, they're new construction, single-family residences that go up all the time that don't come before us. So can you, can you further clarify what that?
So they're adding, right? They're adding square footage and so that's going to trigger that number.
So any addition in Hermosa Beach that adds more than 1,500 square feet comes before the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions for me. Any other further questions of staff or should we pass it to the applicant? Okay. Thank you for the presentation at this point. Actually, at this point, do any of my fellow commissioners have any disclosures to make?
No.
Okay. Seeing none. I'll begin the public comment portion of this hearing. All questions and comments on this matter are to be directed to the commission, not to the audience. If the applicant is present, can you please approach the podium? And if you have a presentation, you can make it or just address the scope of the project.
Yeah, I don't have a presentation and I think my architect's available also via Zoom right now, but I didn't know, if you guys had any questions for me, I guess I could kind of try to explain. My in-laws are actually the owners. I was with my father-in-law earlier, but he ended up having to go home. But right now, he has a big workshop up there. He's a mural artist. He's the one who did the mural that's on Pier Avenue, a couple of blocks down from here. And we're looking to convert that over into a, like one bedroom with a loft for my in-laws to live in. And then my wife and I are living in the back house. And it is all under the same owner. My wife was born in that house and they've been the owners.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this time?
So it's, it's, it's two structures, but a single family.
Yeah, the way that it is now, his workshop was there, so the house, it's almost like a bridge on the second story kind of connects that workshop. And then we're looking to add on a little bit to the back to be able to have the additional garage parking and then it'll make the studio that's there bigger as well for them to be able to turn into a one-bedroom.
I have a similar situation where we have an apartment over the garage, but you are R2B, so you can have the two units. We had to connect the two units with a 30-foot bridge and hallway, so.
Yeah, that's what they did too. I think they, initially, he wanted it to be like an open-air bridge, but I think when he initially built the house, I think he built it around 1990, they made him cover that, but that's basically what the setup is now. And then the current, we call it the studio, is just open and then there's a little bathroom built into there now. And then we're looking to turn that into like a, a one-bedroom with a loft.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I failed to disclose that I worked with Chris Coakley on his mural on Hermosa, I mean, on Manhattan Avenue for many, many months, side by side. So I apologize, I was unaware that's who it was.
I didn't either. So I also disclose that.
We were all on the mural committee.
I'm also on the mural committee, but I don't believe I, I know the artist.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. Seeing none, thank you. I will move to public comment. So all, is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on behalf of this item? Reminder, you have up to three minutes and we will accept Zoom call-ins. Seeing none, I'll see if anyone's online.
There are no online speakers wishing to speak.
Okay, then I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and deliberation. Commissioner Hoffman, you want to kick us off?
Again, now that they've answered the question, it's all under single ownership. I appreciate what's been mentioned that in the past, we have on occasion connected units after dwelling, but there's a lot of newer homes in town, single-story, that are rambling around the courtyard and which components are not connected. I hate to approve a project that will inevitably be a problem down the road for some other planning commission. I'm looking at the age of the applicant thinking, no, I won't live long enough to deal with it when they separate it. I'm going to approve the project that's otherwise conforming. It was just curious, I think this is the first project like this I've ever seen in front of us.
Commissioner McNally?
No comments.
Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes, I certainly support this project. It upgrades an existing design that had been there for many, many years, enhances it. I think it's going to fit the neighborhood even better than what it does now and reminds me of two living dwellings with family members. I mean, that's, that's what an ADU is all about. So I look at it as more of an ADU than anything else. So I certainly support and I appreciate the conversation we had and having the staff explain to us why this is a correct decision on our part. So I support the project.
I support the project.
And I intend to support the project if someone wants to provide a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner McNally?
Approved.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Izant?
Yes.
Chairperson Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Moving on to item number 7A. A price development, a precise development plan, PDP dash or 25 dash 02, conditional use permit, CUP 25 dash 06, investing tentative parcel map number 84794 for a new two-unit residential condominium at 1035 Loma Drive within the multiple, multiple-family R3 zone, case number 25 dash CDD dash 150. Do we have a staff report?
We do and we're going to do a little bit of juggling here. Johnny Case will present the case.
As mentioned, my name is Johnny Case and I will be delivering the presentation this evening for the proposed two new attached condominium units on 1035 Loma Drive. Next slide, please. The request before you this evening is to approve a precise development plan 25 dash 02, conditional use permit 25 dash 06, investing tentative parcel map number 84794 to allow an attached two-unit, 30-foot-tall residential condominium building at 1035 Loma Drive in the multiple-family R3 zone and to determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide, please. The subject site is an interior lot located on the west side of Loma Drive and north of 10th Street. The project site is currently developed with two units and a garage built in 1953, which is proposed to be demolished. Approval of this project would result in no net change of unit count. Additionally, the project site lies within the coastal zone. Next slide, please. Shown here is the city's zoning map providing context of the property's location in relation to adjacent parcels and zoning districts. The site is Zoned R3, multiple-family residential and is surrounded on all sides by R3-zoned properties with existing residents. Along with R3-zoned properties, to the east of the subject site is open space zone parcel providing access to open space, Clark Stadium. Next slide, please. The applicant proposes constructions of two attached condominium units. Unit A is located towards the back of the site and will be 2,031 square feet. Unit B will be located in the front of the site and will be 2,078 square feet. Vehicular access to unit A will be provided via a 22-foot-wide driveway off of Sunset Drive, which would lead to a two-car garage as well as a guest parking space parallel to the garage. Vehicular access to unit B would be provided from Loma Drive via a 16-foot-wide driveway, which would lead to a two-car garage as well as a guest parking space adjacent to the garage. On the first floor for both units is an entryway, a bedroom and an attached bedroom and the laundry room. The second floor of each unit provides the primary bedroom with an attached bathroom as well as two additional bedrooms and a bathroom. On the third floor of both units provides the kitchen, dining room, great room, pantry, powder room, and lead to an outdoor deck. The third floor of unit A also provides a stairway to access the rooftop deck. Next slide, please. Above you may see the current conditions of the subject site, which is proposed to be demolished. Next slide, please. As shown here, the project conforms to all development standards within the R3 zone. Minimum lot area required is 1,320 square feet per unit and 1,390 square feet per unit is provided. Maximum allowable height is 30 feet, which the project meets exactly. Lot coverage is limited to 65%, which the project meets. Minimum front, side, and rear yard setbacks are all satisfied. Parking, open space, and solid waste standards are fully met as well. Next slide, please. In addition to meeting the basic R3 standards, the project complies with all condominium standards. The required minimum unit sizes is 1,600 square feet per unit. The project provides over 2,000 square feet per unit. Private storage meets the 200 cubic feet minimum per unit requirements as well. Next slide, please. Shown above are the proposed west and south elevation, demonstrating the architectural design and articulation of the building. Next slide, please. Here you may see the proposed east and north elevations, showing similar articulation and complementary exterior treatment consistent with the neighborhood character. Next slide, please. Above are the proposed first floor plans for each unit, showing garage access, entryways, first-floor bedrooms, and laundry rooms. Next slide, please. Shown here are the second floor plans for each unit illustrating the primary bedrooms, additional bedrooms, and baths. Next slide, please. The third floor plans are shown here with the main living spaces, including kitchen, great room, dining room, and outdoor deck spaces. Next slide, please. The project has been reviewed for conformance with the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code standards for precise development plans per section 17.58.040, conditional use permits per section 17.56.050, investing tentative parcel maps per section 16.08.060. Next slide, please. In regard to general plan consistency, the project is consistent with goal one, policy 1.6, as well as goal two, policy 2.3. Next slide, please. The project also supports goal five, policy 5.6, and goal six, policy 6.7. Next slide, please. In alignment with the housing element, the project is inconsistent with policy 2.2 and policy 2.4. Next slide, please. The project was evaluated under the California Environmental Quality Act and was determined to qualify for Class III categorical exemption under section 15303 for new construction of small structures. Next slide, please. 306 public hearing notices were mailed on November 3rd, 2025 to property owners, occupants, and the applicant within a 300-foot radius of the property site. A legal ad was published in the Easy Reader on November 6th, 2025. A notice was also posted onsite a minimum of 10 days prior to today's hearing in accordance with Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, section 17.68.050. Next slide, please. This brings us to staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt draft resolution determining that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approve precise development plan 25 dash 02, conditional use permit 25 dash 06, investing tentative parcel map number 84794 to allow an attached two-unit, 30-foot-tall residential condominium building at 1035 Loma Drive in the multiple-family R3 zone, subject to conditions of approval. Next slide, please. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available to answer any questions the commission may have. Additionally, the applicant is present in chambers and has a presentation prepared.
Do we have any questions for staff at this time?
Just one. Counselor, I think we're all aware that there is a side yard access issue. Is this something best addressed first by staff and then by the applicant or should we wait for the applicant? How would you suggest we proceed on that issue?
If staff feels comfortable proceeding, perhaps, but I would assume that the applicant is maybe better poised to answer those questions and they might have been in contact with neighbors, can speak to potential resolutions. So Johnny, do you have something specific to say? Otherwise, I think we pass it to the applicant.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the city, we've reviewed.
we've reviewed the project. In terms of what is being proposed, it's, as shown in the presentation and discussed in the staff report, is compliant to our standards. As in regard to further, perhaps the applicant could shed some more light and open up the discussion for further questions, if you have any.
No, thank you.
If I could ask a slightly unrelated question, this may be more for the Building Department. I know code requires that stairs have to be 36 inches at a private property. If they're strictly inside and they can be as narrow as 30 inches, do we know if, are stairs in the outside, not related, well, obviously related to this project, outside stairs, are they allowed to be less than 36 inches?
I believe that would be more of a building.
I appreciate, I realize it's a building. We don't have our building officials here. I'm looking at Louis to see if he shakes his head or not. He probably knows, but, all right, thanks.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Okay, then I believe the applicant is present. So, before we move to that, do any of my commissioners have disclosures to make?
Other than driving by, none.
Yeah, safe visit.
All right, then we'll move on to the public comment portion of the hearing. All questions and comments on this matter are to be directed to the commission, not the audience. I believe the applicant is present, so please approach the podium to make your presentation.
I appreciate you. It's 8:30, and we're just getting started now, so thank you very much. Chair Hirsch, good evening, commissioners. I'm Stacy Strauss from Sororna Associates. On behalf of the applicant, Alberto Botin and Monique Botin, thank you for the opportunity to present our application tonight. As always, we appreciate the staff's work in getting toward, to this hearing, particularly Planner Case. The applicant seeks your approval of the described two-unit condominium development at 1035 Loma, including a tentative parcel map. And we're here today asking for your support of the project. Currently, as you know, there's a 72-year-old duplex, residential duplex on the site. This is an R3 zone in the city with, currently has a detached garage, substandard parking, as well as parking in the encroachment area, which is an area owned by the city. That's current, that's the current conditions of the site. In terms of neighborhood compatibility in this R3 zone, there are eight condominium developments on this block alone, and seven condominium developments just across the street on Sunset. The proposed two-unit development before you is fully code-compliant, and the plans bring the lot that currently has a legal non-conforming structure into compliance. This contemporary design by Louis Tomorrow, who is here if you have questions of the architect tonight, with some traditional aspects, gives the proposed development charm, and the color palette chosen is compatible with the area and highlights the current desires of design in the market. And the mix of materials gives the artistic component and differentiation, which reduces the bulk and mass of the development. The proposed design is fully code-compliant and is proposing exactly what the general plan envisioned for this lot in this zone of the city. In terms of its broader benefits to the city, the project will increase the parking that currently exists, bring the parking needs fully on-site. The project includes civil plans and includes properly, which includes properly treating storm and surface waters before releasing that water back to the city. In addition, a pedestrian walkway will be built on Sunset, as well as a six-foot continuous ADA-compliant sidewalk on Loma Drive. The project is energy-efficient, meeting California Title 24 standards, and the condo development includes two enclosed parking per unit and an additional guest parking per unit. And the CCNRs will indicate the guest parking is to remain open and accessible for guest parking only. It is worth pointing out that we actually have an additional parking space for a compact car in tandem to the garage on Loma. But since the city parking requirements have been met, it is not delineated on the plans, but it does exist and gives a total of seven onsite parking spaces in this area of the city that is impacted and alleviates stress on the street and allows for visitor-serving access. Additionally, the tentative map will allow for the subdivision of the lot and increase the opportunity for home ownership in the city and additional fees that the city welcomes by creating the subdivision. The applicant is aware of communication from the adjacent property owner regarding the proposed wall in the plans. The applicant has designed the wall to be fully contained on their property. This is not a wall that will straddle the property line. The wall will be fully contained on 1035 Loma. The adjacent property owner has made some claims about easements and access to his property, which are not supported by anything on title or the survey prepared by a licensed engineer and simply reflect his preference to have his tenants be able to walk through the applicant's property to get to a secondary door to one of the units. The staff has reviewed the plans, the title report, the survey, the lot configuration, and none of the claims have been validated. The issues the neighbor raises about access to his property are not in the scope of your review tonight. To the extent he believes they are valid, he can pursue them in an appropriate forum. The applicant is in agreement with all the proposed conditions the staff has recommended. And with that, we request your approval of the precise development plan, use permit for condominium, and a tentative map for subdividing. I'm available for questions, and appreciate your opportunity to address you again if there are additional comments from the public or you have questions.
Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on behalf of this item? Okay, if you can, please approach the podium and state your name. You will have up to three minutes.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm the neighbor to the north of their property line, and I dispute what was just said. Yes, the wall that was referenced is, did I say my name? Oliver Enders, I'm the neighbor next door, the owner. I dispute what she said about the wall, because it is wholly contained on their property, and it's directly on the property line. And I do have some pictures that show the current. Can I hand you these?
Okay.
So you might notice there's a survey marker in the street with a bright orange or pink circle around it. That's the property line. The wall that they're talking about that's on their plans, on page 77 in their tentative parcel map, and on page 49 in the rendering, and numerous other places, you can see my stairs that are next door to this wall, which is right on the property line. Sure, they're saying it's on their property, but if you look at that survey marker in the picture there, it would be along that cement curb there where my stairs are. And it would just button and block in any access to the side yard there, where there's a kitchen door and a water heater closet behind those stairs. And I want to maintain access to those items back there. And this place was built in 1923, and it's 102 years old. And it's always had access around those particular stairs from the very beginning. Their property was built in 1953. Ours was already 30 years old in 1953, and had this kind of access around its stairs. And in those days, the city permitted exterior stairs like that to be built right on the property line. And their current structure also has a stairs right on the property line on the Loma side, if you look at it from the other street. So that's the way things were being done in Hermosa Beach, and they had shared side yards. The three-foot setback was being shared to walk your way around the exterior stairs. And they also had access, I'm out of time, I'm sorry, but please don't approve this until we're able to agree on a shared easement. And your community planning director told us to, told me I could ask you to consider a conditional approval if the two parties are able to agree on a shared easement over this piece of ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question. Or do we not do questions now?
I... There is an online comment. Would you like to?
Oh, I think we still have more comments in chambers, too. Do you have a question of the staff or applicant or the adjacent neighbor?
The person who was just here.
All right, sure. Yes, until someone says no.
Okay.
You want to ask the question? Okay. All right, if you want to approach the podium and state your name.
My name is Francesca Enders, and I'm also the owner of the property with my husband, Oliver Enders. That property is for my retirement, when I get a little bit older. And I really don't want to have a neighbor with a problem. I'm here to come to a common denominator, to get along and to be able to live there peacefully and enjoy my life. I really enjoy Hermosa Beach. And I also appreciate your time and effort that you're here to listen to us. Please consider what my husband has said. The property has been there for a long time. I understand it's a beautiful project and really excited about their project, but they also have to be a little bit more realistic in things. That I need to get my water heater in there. I don't know how to do it if they put a wall in there. I don't have elegant words like she spoke to. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just like you, a citizen of Hermosa Beach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we do have one question of the neighbor.
So, the applicant mentioned that the door is a secondary door. So that means that if you are out, if you are in your... Please come forward, sir. If it is a secondary door and you're inside your structure, can you then not, it would be a very small space, obviously, but can you then not walk out into that space and turn left to your water heater?
Yes, that's true. Another aspect of this side yard is that there's another unit living up those stairs. And he stores his bicycles down there. I agree that they may, you know, be out of hand and a little messy. But between trash cans or bicycles or just outdoor storage, I wouldn't have to, I wouldn't want to have to go through my kitchen door to access, you know, any, it would be, it would be a pocket blocked in by a wall next door. And that's just unacceptable. It hasn't been like that for 102 years, you know? And there's been an implied easement of ingress and egress over that three feet of ground. And we're kind of, and by the way, if you go by your own criteria of evaluating projects for PDP, in my comments to the city, I did list all the pages where this is, kind of violate, this wall causes the plan set to violate numerous of your criteria, including economic degradation of the neighbors, or specifically me. And several criteria, they're all listed in my email and my comments. And you, but that wall is specifically in the development plan. And for you to vote on that development plan as a package, you're voting for this wall that's violating all your criteria and will be penning me in there. And so I would say a condition, this project should be conditioned on the two neighbors agreeing on a shared easement over that. And I had one other item. There's an encroachment, actually, of my foundation over the property line. And the easement would have to cover the encroachment of my foundation, as well as the ingress and egress of our tenants. And so there's two aspects to the ask for easement. And it is something we feel very strongly about, and I'll sit down again.
Thank you so much. All right, anybody else in chambers that wishes to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, I think we did have someone online. Okay.
All right, we have Rachel Enders, and, let's see. Rachel, you are permitted to speak now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the time, for your time, and for the opportunity to be heard on this matter. My name is Rachel Enders-Clark. I'm an attorney representing Francesca and Oliver Enders, the owners of 1040 Sunset Drive, 1038 Sunset Drive, and 1041 Loma Drive, which is the triplex located immediately to the north of the proposed development at 1035 Loma. First, I want to express that you just heard from them, Francesca and Oliver, they're excited. They're truly thrilled to see the renderings for 1035 Loma. The design is thoughtful and attractive, and everyone agrees that this project has a potential to greatly enhance the neighborhood. We support the property owner's efforts to improve the site. We don't want to delay construction or oppose the development as a whole. Our request is simply that certain longstanding access rights be acknowledged and preserved so that both properties can exist harmoniously. The primary issues relate to the construction of the wall on the property line, as well as grading and encroachment of the foundation. For at least 25 years, which is the time period that Oliver and Francesca have owned the property next door, this has been continuously and openly used by 1038 and 1040 Sunset occupants. So as it was brought up just recently, not only is it the tenant at 1040, the downstairs unit that has access to the kitchen door, but also 1038, the unit that lives up on the second floor, they also have continuously and openly used this side path. As Oliver mentioned, this has been used for various uses over the years, including trash cans, storage of bicycles, storage of other items, et cetera. Furthermore, the kitchen door that was Furthermore, the kitchen door that was characterized as a secondary door, it also serves as an emergency exit from the kitchen, which is the most likely place on the property to catch fire. The water heater also is, you know, another fire hazard, leak hazard and flood hazard, which requires access and the easier the access, the better that avoids damage to property for any property that's close by. Now, if the wall is built, grading is changed or the foundation is not recognized, then there could be serious problems. Things could be made unsafe and things can be blocked and blocked in. As we discussed, this is not a new use. There's a strong case for pursuing a prescriptive, prescriptive easement through the courts. That's not the outcome that anyone wants. Litigation benefits no one and risks delaying a project that we genuinely hope to see move forward. Instead, we're hoping that we can come to a cooperative resolution, which includes the recording of a mutually agreed upon easement, preserving the rights of the parties. We have not yet had a chance to confer with the property owners of 1035 Loma. I have personally called them multiple times and left a message with their architect and they have not gotten back to us. They state that no claims have been validated and that this is a preference issue. You know, they haven't had the, the, you know, kindness to just return our phone call and talk to us about this issue. So at this point in time, we have to point out that the CUP violates, you know, number three of the CUP is violated because the pro, the proposed use will be adverse to the community, detrimental to surrounding properties and improvements.
If you wouldn't mind just wrapping up your comments, you're over time, thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. And the tentative parcel map is also being violated because the proposed project reduces the property value and encumbers 1040 Sunset, 1040 Sunset, 1038 Sunset and lowers the value of the whole triplex, the whole property in its whole. So for these reasons, we're requesting the conditional.
Is there anyone else online that wishes to speak on behalf of this item?
Yes.
Okay.
Liz Tindorf?
What happened?
We, we can, if we're having a technical difficulty that is precluding participation on Zoom, we can continue to proceed with the meeting without Zoom. We, we use Zoom in order to encourage public participation, but it's not an essential function. We're holding a public meeting in person. So I would, I would say let's move on with the, with the meeting and if they're successful in the future. difficulty with our Zoom connection. In the interest of time and advancing the case forward, we're going to proceed.
Okay.
Take it away, Madam Chair.
All right. So then we're going to, before I end the public comment portion of the hearing, I'll invite the applicant to come back and address any concerns that have been brought up during the public hearing.
Chair Hirsch, Commissioners, I'm Brandon Strauss from Soror and Associates on behalf of the applicant. Just to address some of these comments regarding the easement, we, we did hear from the, the neighbor's attorney a few days ago and certainly wanted to respond, but the applicant hasn't had a chance to secure the services of his own attorney. So he definitely wants representation in responding to that. You know, the applicant, like every other property owner in the city, is entitled to improve their property in accordance with the municipal code. And that's what is being proposed here. That's what the staff has reviewed and agreed is in compliance. And you know, the city has a process to deal with this kind of issue. That's why every time we apply for development of property, we have to submit a current survey that has all the current, it's based on the current title report and shows all the easements. And that way the city is able to tell what rights there are to that property and what, if any, could inhibit the ability of the city to approve the development that's being proposed. So, you know, it's kind of a fundamental property right or aspect of property ownership that you get to keep.
Recording in progress.
You get to keep people off of your property without your permission. Okay, so that, that's what this is about. None of this development is, is on the neighbor's property, it's all within the applicant's property. And, you know, continued trespassing over property does not create an easement. And, you know, if there is some claim that it does, this body is not the one to adjudicate that. This is a civil matter and it can be addressed in, you know, a judicial context if that's what the preference is, but, you know, in this case.
Recording in progress.
We don't think that the city can't condition an approval on the applicant giving up a property right to a private, to another private individual. So, you know, that's not a condition we think we could accept. It's a, it's a road to going down, you know, basically having to agree to, you know, whatever is put, put to the applicant in order to move forward and, and we don't think that's appropriate. So we'll definitely take a condition that all development remain within the property, the applicant's property lines. And, and that's all, that's the intent.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant before we close, close the public comment portion of the hearing? All right, seeing none, I will now close.
Chairperson, sorry, now that we're back online, I do have a participant on Zoom who would like to speak.
Okay.
Not this one from before. So this is Nancy, so you should be able to speak now.
Hi, Nancy Schwapack, thank you very much. This is a classic example of something we see every time we get new development in this city next to 100-year-old properties. There are implied easements, there are things that people have just been using and living with for 100 years. And then a new property owner comes in and as the applicant has said, hey, it's my property, I have the right to do what I want to do. And maybe there is nothing we can do for this particular property, maybe, I don't know, I haven't looked into it, I'm just hearing it the first time tonight. But I would really suggest that this is something that we look into in our future developments because these 100-year-old properties are things we all value. And if they become unusable or their value is less and/or their tenants can no longer store their bicycles, I think our city loses something. So again, maybe there's nothing you can do on this one, there may be, I don't know. But I would like to think this is something we can look into in the future because it is an ongoing problem as we lose our 100-year-old properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another online comment or?
No, none at this time.
Okay. All right, I will now close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring back the matter to the Commission for Discussion and Deliberation. Commissioner, Vice Chair Izan, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Chair Hirsch. I'm not a land use attorney, so I'm not sure whether there's any legal application for historic easement use. And I do, I do agree that this particular project is in conformance with everything that it needs to conform to. Having said that, I would certainly, it's not my property, although my property on the east side and the west side, we've had no walls for 40 years for the entire length of the property. Now, we're used to that, of course, and this is not to say that this is equivalent. So informally, I hope it doesn't come to a civil matter, I don't, you know, if the wall was peeled back about 12 feet with a gate, how much would that hurt? Having said that, I don't see a reason to delay this project, I'm going to support it.
Commissioner Flaherty.
I totally agree with my fellow commissioner. I would support this project wholly, but I, as we have done for decades now, we've encouraged both parties to meet. And I thought Steve's idea of moving the north wall with a gate back for access underneath that, or Pete's was superb, can we narrow down the stairwell and be compliant? That would give a smaller opening, but it's between the two parties, it's not between us. That's my position, so thank you very much for those two ideas. thank you very much for those two ideas, fellow commissioners. I would encourage the property owners to gather together as, as this project is going on. It's, we're still months away from demo, I assume even. So I appreciate that other insight from fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I guess I'd start with some of my ex parte communication. I live on Loma, a 105-year-old house. So I was there way before and have dealt with exactly this issue, brand-new conduit on the adjacent north side of us that precluded access to a side yard, at least from one direction. It's the price I paid to live in a 105-year-old house. The property rights of these individuals to develop a new, fully compliant property is their right. If they choose to negotiate with their adjacent neighbors to change the wall or to provide that access, that's great. If it doesn't make sense to them, I'm not the person to judge that. Again, fully compliant project that meets all of the standards and will in fact improve my neighborhood as well as theirs.
Commissioner McNally.
Well, I understand the dilemma, and I'm very sorry for this. I've been looking at this picture for quite some time. It's the exact situation I had when I lived at 20729th Street in Hermosa Beach. We had a staircase and a building and a wall that went right up to us. And although it was an inconvenience, it was our neighbor's property and we had to respect that. And we're not, I have to respect the applicant's property line and I'll support this.
Thank you. I think similar to my fellow commissioners, the purview of, of our review right now is within the property lines of, of the site that the applicant is proposing. I do understand the sensitivity to the condition with the neighbor's access. I hope that you guys can confer and come up with a reasonable solution that suits both parties, but I think that's beyond the purview of, of the commission. So I intend to support the project.
Chair Hirsch, I move staff resolution CUP 2509, or 2506, tentative parcel map 84794, and find that the project is exempt from SEQA. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner McNally?
I am.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Izant?
Yes.
Chairperson Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to item number 7B.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, oh.
I'm going to recuse myself of this item. It's proximity to my own home.
Okay. Item number, I'll give him a minute to step out. Okay. Moving on to item number 7B, the precise development plans, PDP 25-07 and PDP 25-08, conditional use permit, CUP 25-09 and CUP 25-10, and vesting tentative parcel map number 84793 for two new, two-unit residential condominiums at 714 and 722 Loma Drive in the two-family residential R2 zone, case number 25-CCD-162. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Thank you. Well, good evening, Chairperson and Vice Chair Commissioners. I'm sure you're grateful I'm on this side of the podium and now. Apologize. I don't know what happened with those technological difficulties, but hopefully they're behind us. This project is very similar to the last project that you just heard, so I'll keep my references and remarks maybe a little bit shorter. This is also on Loma Drive. In this case, we have two lots that are owned by the same owner and they are going to be developing them in tandem. Each lot has two units on it, and that's at 714 and 722 Loma Drive. We're in the R2 zone. This is for two conditional use permits, two precise development plans, and a vesting tentative parcel map. Next slide, please. I just wanted to start the discussion with the rendering. It's kind of where maybe jumping to the end, but you'll have a sense of what the project will look like that we'll be discussing. Next slide, please. So the request, as discussed, is for a categorical exemption from SEQA, the approval of those CUPs, number 2509 and 2510, precise development plans, 2507, 2508, and a vesting tentative parcel map, 84793, to allow those two new, two-unit detached 30-foot-tall condominium buildings there on Loma for a total of four units. Next slide, please. We are in the R2 zone. You can see with this zoning map that directly behind the property, we have our M1 zone. The block across is also R2, and then the properties to the south are R2, whereas the properties to the north are R3. Next slide, please. This is an interior lot with a two-unit family residence at 714 and a single-family residence at 722. Both lots were developed in 1953. If you want to go to the next slide, I think it's a nice image that these are the two units, two lots with each of their units displayed. And then go ahead to go to the next slide. What I found was kind of interesting about the project is that these two units were developed in 1953 at the same time by the same owner. And that's what we have before you today. With the only difference, you can see a light pole that's in between those two units. Staff, the Public Works Department, the applicant are very aware of this light pole, and it will be removed and relocated as this project progresses and of course, with your approval tonight. Next slide, please. So this is the construction of four detached condominium, condominium units. Units A are at the street level. Units B are behind unit A. They are four detached. They will share a driveway that straddles both properties, similar to a project you saw on Bard about, I think, six months, maybe eight months ago, a similar configuration. So they'll have reciprocal easements recorded to allow that access for both lots to share that driveway. That driveway does lead to the garages and guest parking spaces for the development. Open space is going to be provided, and this is maybe slightly, it deviates from some of the plans you've seen. There actually is open space provided at the ground level as well as on decks and balconies. Next slide, please. Again, we have a project that is compliant with all of our development standards. Of course, that's part of staff's review and the process before we bring any project before you. They are right at that maximum for lot coverage at 65 feet. Again, as typical, they're at the maximum for our building height at 30 feet. Their side yard setbacks are compliant with actually a little bit of additional footage on both the side at the south and at the rear for their level one. So level one is at 10 feet and it's at five feet for the second level. We do have compliance on parking as well. As stated, there's going to be four garages, one for each unit. And there will also be one guest spot per lot. So that'll be a total of two guest spaces. Next slide, please. We also demonstrate compliance with our condominium development standards. Again, something that's maybe a little bit unique or interesting about this project is because of the configurations of the garage. Normally, you'll see your private storage space accommodated in the garage. And in this case, it's partly accommodated in the garage. And there's also a lockable storage on the roof decks to finish the completion of that requirement. The height maximum, as it applies to a walk street, does not apply as this is not a walk street. And they're compliant with, with all the development standards as required for condominiums. Next slide, please. Here, we provided for you the west and south elevations. This is for, for the units. And you can see the design articulation. The architect is also here. He can speak honestly much more eloquently than I can with regard to all of the design features. And he has a presentation to share with you. So we'll go ahead and go on to the next slide. That also applies for our east and north elevation. So next slide, please. For our proposed floor plans, I provided for you tonight above these proposed four plans for 714A for levels one and two. Again, I think it's fairly typical for our condominium developments. We have our garage on our first floor with a bedroom, laundry room, and elevator shaft. On the second floor are more bedrooms with bathrooms. And then go ahead to the next slide, please. And here we show you our third level, which includes the great room, which again is something we commonly see in these developments. And they have a roof deck as well. You also see in this floor plan that there is a balcony that's right there at the front of the floor plan on the third floor. For 714, 722A, you're going to have the same floor plan, just a mirror. And for 722, again, really the same floor plan, the only major difference being rather than that large balcony at the front, they have a small deck at the back. Next slide, please. Again, Johnny already went through all of the findings, so I will summarize them. For a conditional use permit, a precise development plan, and a vesting tentative parcel map in the pursuant Hermosa Beach Municipal Code sections. Next slide, please. We do have general plan consistency of goal one, specifically policy 1.6, which is to consider the compatibility of new development within its urban context. As you already heard, there are a lot of condos developed on Loma currently. This would be one that will can add to that urban context. Next slide, please. We also have policy 7.1. We have compliance with our permeable pavement, which is that no more than 50% be impermeable. So they have demonstrated that compliance. Next slide, please. Additionally, we have policy 2.2 to encourage the development of safe, sound, and decent housing to meet the needs of varying income groups. Again, as we discussed, I think, hours ago at this point, most of our units are going to be at market rate, but we are adding to our Rena numbers. We'll have an addition of one unit for this project. Next slide, please. For our environmental determinations, similar to our last project and I think all the other condo projects before you that are less than five, we have an exemption under SEQA of categorical section 15303, class three, new construction. Next slide, please. A public notice was conducted for this project, again, on the same dates that Johnny shared. We, you know, same, same planning commission days, same dates. But just to review that, over 200 public notices were mailed on November 3, 2025 to property owners, occupants, and the applicant within a 300-foot radius, as well as a legal ad was published in the Easy Reader on November 6, 2025. Notices were also posted on-site, a minimum of 10 days prior to today's hearing, in accordance with our Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, section 176850. And when I came into the chambers, there was no public comment. So that was a while ago, but I don't think that's changed. Next slide, please. So this would bring us to staff's recommendation, which would be to adopt draft resolution 2520, thus determining that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA, and approve conditional use permits 2509 and 2510, precise development plans 2507 and 2508, and vesting tentative parcel map number 84793 for two new, two-unit detached condominium buildings, a total of four condos at lots 714 and 722 Loma Drive in the two-family residential zone, and of course, subject to conditions. That concludes, next slide, thank you. That concludes my staff report for you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for staff at this time? All right, Commissioner Flaherty.
Sure. Thank you, first of all, for your report. And I do remember you saying something about the developer and the public works department, you relocate the streetlight currently in between their new property, their property. So.
Yes.
The third party involved is a neighbor on the north side of that property. He's going to have a light that was 30 feet away.
Now, in his view. So I think that's appropriate to extend the developer and for sure, the city extends some notice to him when they make that decision. Currently, on page 29 of 29 of the development plan itself, it shows it in, on the sidewalk within the, a foot or two of the property line of the existing or the new proposed location. Loma was developed with those streetlights, developing seven out of eight of them on property lines. It was done deliberate. Nobody wanted one directly in front of their house. This one is, is moving it so the, the average distance is going to change now. So most of those poles are lined up within, let's say, a few feet of being not only on the center of a property line, but equidistant apart. This is going to change that. So I encourage you from this, your department as well as Public Works, to meet with the next door property. Make sure he's in, in tune with this. He may have some objection or he may have some suggestions, but it's important. I dealt with a lot of street lighting issues. These are very important issues when it comes to night views. He has a second deck. It's going to look right into a pole. So thank you very much. It could be shading. It could be putting some sort of a glare or a blind around. It could be all kinds of things that he would accept. But moving it next door from 30 feet away may not be. So thank you for that. The other thing I would say is in both the properties that we talked about on Loma, both don't have sidewalks now. They will have sidewalks.
Correct.
It was clear. That was an added attraction to both Sunset and, and Loma. There's eight different whiffs on Loma Drive right now, caused by the engineering department and the planning department and the contractors over a 40-year period. None of them line up. This is your opportunity to start lining up some streets. So I, please, take that into consideration as you deal further with the contractor. Is the contractor here tonight?
The architect is here.
The architect.
Yeah. And Public Works has reviewed the plans and given their comments, and I think has that preliminary sidewalk.
I know I'm in the, the Public Works lane right now, but this is in front of me and I want to make sure you hear it.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will ask my fellow commissioners if they have any disclosures to make.
Only drone by the property.
Side visit.
Okay.
Drive by.
All right. Then we will now begin the public comment portion of the hearing. All questions and comments on this matter are to be directed to the commission and not the audience. If the applicant is present and wants to approach the podium to make a presentation, you may do so at this time.
It's queued up, right? Hello, my name is Alex Ayota, and I'm the designer for the 722 and 714 Loma Drive condominium project. We're developing it with my dad and my sister. We're, it's kind of like a family development. So I'll, this presentation, I'll try to keep it short, under five minutes. I know we're pressed for time. I'm going to talk about the existing conditions and the proposal, the public right-of-way improvements, including the, the light pole, because we started already digging into that, coordinating with Public Works and Edison, to be aware that it's a problem. The program, site planning, and then I'll talk a little bit to the design character of the buildings. Next slide, please. So today, there are two older dwelling units. So today, there are two older dwelling, there are two buildings with three dwelling units and a garage on these two parcels. So currently, there are three units across the two sites. Under this proposal, those buildings will be replaced with four condominium units for a net gain of one dwelling unit across the two sites. Next site, please. So yeah, this one is talking about the public right-of-way improvements and the new sidewalk. So the proposal includes improving the public realm in front of the both properties. The project includes a new sidewalk, curb, gutter along the entire frontage of both streets, and we are consolidating access to a single curb cut and driveway that serves both properties. So I think this reduces the number of curb cuts on Loma Drive, and it provides a lot, a safer pedestrian walk in front of the properties. And then in regards to the light pole, yeah, so that was the first thing we saw. So on day one, the first place we went to was not the planning commission, not the planning department, we went to Public Works, and we're like, we have a light pole, what do we do about it? And so we've been coordinating for about six months now with Public Works. We're planning staffing as well to see what we can do to shift it. I agree on reaching out to the adjacent neighbor to let them know, and we were planning to do that as the coordination with Edison moves forward, because they take their sweet time doing things. So as soon as we're able to, we will communicate with the neighbor. Next slide, please. Yeah, so on the ground floor plans, you see that each of the four units has its own two-car garage with an additional guest space on each parcel. So in total, this whole project is going to bring 10 parking spaces to Loma, which has, you know, is very parking challenged, it's parking challenged street. We have also increased front and rear setbacks beyond the minimum in order to reduce the perceived bulk and to provide a front porch, front yard situation for the front units, and to provide usable rear yard for both rear units. Next slide, please. Yeah, so each home is a larger, family-oriented unit. They're roughly between 2750 and 2800 square feet of living area with four bedrooms, four and a half bathrooms, roof deck, and all have elevators. The front units have their own front yards, the rear units have private rear yards, and the intent is to provide long-term, more accessible housing that can work for a range of households and life stages. Next slide, please. And now I wanted to speak to the design character. I don't usually like to label designs with a specific style, but if I had to, I would describe it as a minimal expression with contemporary Mediterranean influences. There'll be simple, off-white volumes, restrained detailing, and warm accents like the wood entry doors and planting to keep the street presence light and less imposing. The massing is organized as a series of interlocking volumes that represent, that respond directly to the interior program. They're coordinated with the interior layout, so there's a subtle alignment between what you see on the outside and how the spaces are organized within. The ground floors are stepped, and they're carved back to reduce the perceived bulk for pedestrians that are walking, and to reduce the perceived scale. Same with the third stories, they're set back even further so that you have a balcony. And again, it doesn't, it's an attempt to perceive the height of these buildings. And yes, we're using recessed window profiles, deep reveals, and we're trying to keep a consistent rhythm of vertical windows and arches. These are intended to add depth and visual interests that play with light and shadow since the proposal is to keep it all a singular material. So yeah, light and shadow are kind of the main material here, so like little steps ins and outs will cast interesting shadows as the light, the sun changes throughout the day and the seasons. So it's a little bit more than just a surface treatment. Next slide. And so that wraps up my presentation. In summary, this project replaces three older dwelling units with four detached homes, improves the public right-of-way with a new sidewalk, curb, and a consolidated driveway, provides adequate onsite parking and usable yards, and introduces a quiet, minimal architectural expression with contemporary Mediterranean references. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time?
No.
No, okay. Then we will now begin the public comment portion of the hearing. All questions and comments on this matter are to be directed to the commission and not to the audience. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on behalf of this item? Please approach the podium, state your name, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Larry Nakamura. I am the neighbor at the north, 728 Loma. Hello. So our four units were built about 13 or 14 years ago, so very similar to this project. So, you know, kind of excited to see the neighborhood getting upgraded. Good point about the light pole. I do hope that that's coordinated with us, because that is kind of a sightly view. And we also have a crow problem, so, you know, we don't want the crows to be any closer to, than they have to be, honestly. I came to this meeting hoping to see some renderings, which I have seen. Our four units were built with floor-to-ceiling windows, which are a really nice feature. Won't be quite as nice, because some of the view will be gone, but I was hoping to see, and maybe I can talk to you guys later, on your north side of the building, I'm hoping that you don't have floor-to-ceiling windows either, because then we'll be looking right into each other's properties. And in Hermosa, you all know, we're all stacked really close together, so that would be kind of awkward. We do have special shading, sun shading, so you can see out during the day, you can see through it, but at night, you can see into our properties. So that, that would be my only concern at this point, but looking forward to seeing what, what the neighborhood will look like with sidewalks and everything. But yes, please do get with us on that light pole. That would be great, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public or in the chambers? Seeing none, we'll see if we have anyone online.
There are no online participants wishing to speak.
Okay. Does the applicant have anything they want to address that came up in public comment? Nope. Okay, then I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and deliberation. Commissioner McNally, I'll start with you.
I just had one question I should have asked staff, I'm sorry. The light pole was in between the two properties and need to be removed because that's where the driveway is going, correct? Okay, thanks.
Any other com, oh, it's late, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Izant.
No comment, I'm going to support the project.
Okay. Commissioner Flaherty.
I certainly am going to support the property. Thank you for both meeting with the neighbor tonight and resolving some problems in the future. It's a great addition to the neighborhood. As the neighbor said, it'd be great to walk down sidewalks. So Loma is now improving at a great rate, to a night.
And I also intend to support the project, it seems, in compliance with all the city requirements. So I'll see if we have a motion.
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, can we have a vote? It was moved by Flaherty and seconded by Izant.
Commissioner McNally.
Approved.
Commissioner Hoffman. Oh, sorry. Also late. Commissioner Flaherty.
Yes.
Vice Chair Person Izant.
Yes.
Chairperson Hirsch.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to item number 7C, convex slope determination, CSD 25-01 and precise development plan, PDP 25-04, for structural rehabilitation remodel in addition to a four-unit apartment building located at 3232 Hermosa Avenue in the multifamily residential R3 zone, case number 25-CCD-165. Do we have a staff report?
All right, good evening, planning commissioners. Jake Whitney, associate planner, I'll be doing the presentation for this item this evening. I'll just wait for the presentation to be pulled up. All right, we can move to the next slide. Okay, so the request before you this evening is to approve the convex slope determination 25-01 and precise development plan 25-04 for structural rehabilitation remodel in addition to a four-unit building located at 3232 Hermosa Avenue in the multifamily R3 zone. Staff is also recommending that the project be found to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15302, class two, replacement and reconstruction. Next slide, please. So the subject property is at the corner of the intersection of Hermosa Avenue and 33rd Street, which is a walk street, and vehicular access to the site is currently provided via Palm Drive. The existing four-unit building was built in 1923 and is legal non-conforming with regard to density, parking, and open space. The property is also located within the coastal zone. The item was continued from the October 21, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to tonight's hearing at the applicant's request. Next slide, please. Shown above is the zoning map, providing context for the site. The property is zoned R3 and to the northeast and south, with R1 zoning to the west, lacrosse from Hermosa Avenue. Next slide, please. So the applicant is proposing, as mentioned, a structural rehab of the four-unit building. It also includes a minor 188 square foot addition through the conversion of 119 square feet of non-conditioned space and the enclosure of 69 square feet of exterior space. An existing partition in the two-car garage would be removed to make the garage space more functionally suitable for vehicle storage, whereas currently it is not. Unit sizes would be reconfigured to eliminate setback non-conformities and public right-of-way encroachments. After speaking with the Public Works Department, we can confirm there are currently no encroachment permits on file for the property. Unit one at the site would go from 694 square feet to 659. Unit two would go from 722 to 592. Unit three would go from 902 to 763, and unit four would go down from 1,001 square feet to 789. Meanwhile, the applicant is also, with this request, adding a convex slope determination to the application package, as this convex slope determination would be needed to maintain the existing building height by using alternate spot elevations for height calculation purposes. To support the applicant's request, they provided city staff with a geotechnical report, which delineated the location of four boring sample sites on the property, and they revealed a range of half a foot to a foot and a half of fill soil at each drilling location. The staff recommendation is to utilize the alternate points requested by the applicant, excluding the presence of fill soils to best reflect the existing natural grade. Next slide, please. Oh, one thing I missed. Proposed landscaping for the site also includes 14 silver sheen kahuhu plants and 21 coastal rosemary plants along Hermosa. And we can get the next slide. So shown here are photographs of the existing site depicting the four-unit building. As you can see, it's currently fenced off and does not appear to be occupied. Next slide, please. As shown on the development standards table, the property is legal non-conforming with several respects. The existing lot area per unit is 850 square feet, whereas per the zoning code, 1,320 square feet would be required. The building currently measures 32.7 feet in height without the convex slope determination, and with a determination, it would be 29.38, complying with 30-foot maximum. Lot coverage is currently at 50, would be at 55%, well below the 65% maximum, and front, side, and rear yard setbacks would be satisfied, as where several non-conforming setbacks exist today. Parking would remain at two spaces, whereas 10 would be required under current codes, and open space would be, remain insufficient at 506 square feet, whereas 1,200 square feet would be required under existing code. Both of these legal non-conforming conditions would not be made worse by the project. Next slide, please. Above are the proposed west and east-facing elevations, showing the rehabilitated facade as well as the architectural enhancements to the building's aesthetic appeal. Next slide, please. The slide above shows the proposed north elevation facing 33rd Street and demonstrating the exterior design in detailing. Next slide, please. The south elevation is shown here, illustrating consistency and architectural treatment. Next slide, please. Above are the first floor plans of the units, showing the reconfigured interior layout and garage access via Palm Drive. Next slide, please. Second floor plan is depicted here, illustrating the upper-level unit configurations. Next slide, please. And the roof plan here shows the roof configuration depicting access points and mechanical equipment locations. Next slide, please. So this project requires approval of a precise development plan pursuant to Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Section 175840. In order to grant this PDP, three findings must be made in the affirmative, and the staff analysis on these findings can be found in pages seven through nine of your staff reports. Next slide, please. The project was evaluated for consistency with Plan Hermosa, the general plan, and was found to support goal two of the land use element, specifically with
Hear that? That's the sound of your life. Perfectly imperfect. But every time you drive after drinking, the music gets drowned out. Your life sounds pretty great. Don't let a buzz ruin it.
Buzzed driving is drunk driving. Don't drive buzzed.
Hey, boss. You okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
You sure?
Said I'm fine.
Since I was little, it was only like me and my parents. You think you created family out of characters? Yeah, before. I'm gonna take that and make it into a song.
Hey, son.
Hey, pop.
Talk to me.
It's been really, really hard for me.
The bravest person I know is my daughter Cynthia.
My friend Sha, and he was in the Air Force.
One of the bravest things he ever did wasn't when he first enlisted. It was when he found his first support group.
It was when he asked to move in with me and my mom.
I felt like I was lost, and you gave me a place to stay.
She went on foreign soil. She went to war. But the bravest thing she did is when she asked for help.
Loss of a protected unit, which is one that's occupied by lower-income households within a prior five-year period, or if it's subject to any local rent controls, price controls, you know, things of that nature.
So even any commonsensical determination of an apartment building that had three ocean-view units, we would have to assume they were in fact protected units, failing demonstrated proof?
That's correct, in without sufficient demonstration regarding the applicant's income, and I stress the phrase "income" rather than rental amount, as the state statute clarifies that it's the applicant's income that's relevant. The, in theoretical sense, the rent could be 10,000 a month, and it still would not be relevant for determining the income which is needed for compliance with state law.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Flaherty.
Johnny, again, great report. I have a couple, just cleanup issues for me. On the applicant's project plans on our page 2 of 18, Section 4, he says the nuisance water from the roof and side yards and patios must discharge onto Fifth Street and Pacific Place. It's a cut-and-paste issue. That's in Manhattan Beach. We don't want them to pump stormwater from Hermosa to Manhattan. So the other thing is on page 10 of 11 of your staff report, I think we need to look at the dates that listed there. They're not applicable to this meeting here. They're applicable to the October meeting. And then I, I, I thought your, your decision on the, the lot sloping and the, by requiring the filter to be the, the point where you go underneath the fill for the measurement is accurate, as far as that has been historically what we've done. We found fill dirt. The other thing is that when we get that document where they did a great job of all the survey points, both north and south, normally we like, at least historically, we've seen the building framed in that, not just the frame of the points of, of the survey. So that has a lot to do with my looking at to see how the envelope of that new point, rather than a straight line, the actual convex lot issue. So that would be something in the future, of course. You saw, you reviewed, you felt, you gave a summation of how you could use that slope lot or the survey minus the filter, and I certainly appreciate that. So I do have a lot of conversation on the, I'd like to talk and hear from the applicant regarding his view on why he wrote us the letter, and why he should be more confidentially versus applying the way you have said so. I assume you're applying state law, not Hermosa Beach planning rules?
That's correct. So this requirement comes from the state legislature, originally through Senate Bill 330, and then amended by SB 8. We've done some analysis on what some other jurisdictions have done, and have found that Hermosa's verification method is somewhere in between the rest of our, shall I say, sister cities on this issue, if not a bit more permissive. So yes, it's up to each individual jurisdiction to execute state law to the best of their ability, and this is the methods that we've been using thus far.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Ozant.
Jake, the letter that you referenced from the applicant, I don't have it in my attachments, and I don't recall a specific email. In this letter, did, was a reason given for not submitting a income survey?
Well, the applicant, I'm sure, will speak to this. The reason provided to us is that the information, while part of the public record that they've compiled, would be amount to a privacy issue when bunched together and shared in a public forum.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Just real quick. This is a, a new kind of thing for you. So the convex slope determination, what we're doing is, if I were to stand on Hermosa Avenue and look straight up, the building would be 32 feet and something inches, but we're going to use a different determination, bring it down to 29 feet, making it comply with the 30-foot rule. Is that correct?
More or less, yes. The idea being that instead of using the straight-line interpolated grade, which we are accustomed to using, that we would take into consideration the natural grade more of the site.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay. Thank you for the staff presentation. If the applicant is present, if you want to, please approach the podium to make your presentations, and while you're doing that, do any of my fellow commissioners have disclosures to make?
I made a site visit and did it in the company of one of our junior planners. Senior planners, excuse me.
Site visit. Site visit.
Site visit.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All right. Thank you, Chair Hershey. Commissioners Brandon Strauss again, Saroran Associates, on behalf of the project. This site we are discussing tonight is an existing four-unit apartment building, and as you see, it's on your slide above. It's 102 years old, structure is well past its useful life. Demolition of the structure is not an option, so this is not actually a demolition. It's not an option because the state law requires that four units be maintained on the site, and the city code allows only two new units to be built, so it must be, it must be preserved as a four-unit structure. Several of the building walls are located in the required setbacks, so those walls cannot be repaired without tearing them down and rebuilding them in the correct place. In short, there are significant hurdles to any work on this site, and the hurdles are very costly to overcome. In the face of these challenges, however, the owner is proposing to transform the building into a showpiece with four, you know, new, beautiful units. If you would switch the slide to the proposal. In addition to moving all the encroaching walls inside the property, the new design will make the open space and the parking closer to conformity. While the building nominally has two garages, neither is large enough to fit a modern vehicle. The proposed remodel incorporates a new code-compliant two-car garage, so it really actually increases onsite parking from zero to two. As part of this effort, we are asking for a convex lot determination, and as Mr. Whitney said, based on the city specifications for finding a convex lot, this site meets those requirements to use the actual grade of the lot, less any fill soil. So for the foregoing reasons, we ask for your approval of the precise development plan and the convex lot determination. In addition to these two issues under review tonight, there is the third issue of the affordability restriction on the proposed development, and that will be addressed by Mr. Bobko.
Nice to see everybody again. It's late, so I'll try to get right to it. My friend, what's your name again? Jake Whitney. Mr. Whitney did a really good job explaining this, and I, I differ slightly, but it's fortunate because I think that we have a solution that's very readily available to us on this problem. So you have, in this case, I'm going to do, in this case, I'm going to give you some facts, and then I'm going to do what a lawyer does, and I'm going to spin a couple of hypotheticals for you, and then I'm going to tell you about a secondary market that you didn't know about, okay? So first thing, the facts. The facts are that in order to get to this income verification element of this housing law, you have to have two things first, and I don't think we have those things, but we're not going to argue about that tonight. First thing you have to have is a demolition. We don't have a demolition. Demolition is not described in the relevant law. The city thinks that if it's more than 50% and it's unusable, that constitutes demolition. That is a, you know, we can dispute that later on. There is no demolition here. So there is no demolition, and there is no decrease in the number of housing units, right? There's going to be, there are four there now. There will be four there in the future. Without those, one of those two things, you don't get to the income verification. But let's just put those aside for now and talk about the income verification. And the section of the law that is related to this is Government Code 669153B1, and it's, I mean, it's 10, 15 pages long here. The phrase that we're interested in, though, is, "If the income category of the last household in occupancy is not known, it shall be rebuttably presumed that the lower-income renter household occupied these units in the same proportion of low-income renter households to all renter households within the jurisdiction." So the important words in that phrase, the facts that we need to focus on are two. The first is that the prior renters' income is not known, okay? And the second is that if you don't know it, there's a rebuttable presumption, and Commissioner Hoffman, I think you asked the question, if we don't know, do we assume then that it's low income even if it's on the beach? And the answer is yes. There's a rebuttable presumption. So let's spin out a couple of hypotheticals from those facts, and the reason I'm speaking in hypotheticals, I think, will become obvious here in a moment. But when we ask if the income is known, that assumes that someone could be there to give us the information. But what if the people who have the information about income don't want to give it to you? Or if the city asks for it in a, in a format in which the applicant cannot provide it? In this case, what we have is the city gives applicants a form, or somebody who's doing a, a project a form, and you go to the person and you say, "Hey, you rented this, right? We know, we have your rental agreement, whatever. You're not there anymore. Would you mind signing and saying that your income rises above a certain level?" Many times, people will do that. But the hypothetical I want to present to you is, what if they don't? Or worse, what if, when the new property owner goes to the people who were the prior tenants and says, "I'd like for you to sign this form that says that your income rose above a particular level," and the person said, "You need that, don't you? Because you want to redevelop the property. It's going to cost you." Well, okay, is it a case of beer? Is it $1,000? Is it $10,000? Is it $50,000? What price should the, should the applicant have to pay in order to submit the form that the city wants? Or hypothetically, could the applicant say, "You know what? Not going to play your game. I'm not going to pay this money to you for this form that the city's asked me for," which, incidentally, will not be found anywhere in any of the statutes. That is purely a city-driven administrative process. "But what if I decide I'm not going to play that game?" Well, then we go to the second piece, right? Because the first thing we were talking about is, if it's known, we'll take that off the table because it cannot be indisputably known because the people who know it and can verify it don't want to give us the information without being paid, hypothetically. So we go to the second piece, which is the rebuttable presumption. So what would be enough to rebuttably presum, to, ugh, I'm sorry, it's getting late. What would be enough to rebut the presumption? Would it be enough to go online and find where people worked on different social media sites? Would it be enough to find their resumes and be able to attach certain income to those particular jobs that they've listed? Would it be enough to show hypothetically that they go on vacations that we know the cost of? These are things that you might be able to show hypothetically to prove that people at least rebut the presumption that they're not low income. The question then becomes, if the person who owns the property is basically held hostage by people who don't live there anymore, have no interest in it, and are only trying to extract some money in order for him to be able to do with his property what he wants, should he then be able to go and use that information for his own purposes without any repercussion? Maybe, maybe. But one could quickly see how presenting, aggregating information and presenting it in a forum like this publicly could create problems for both the applicant, for the city, who's compelling him to provide it, and maybe to people who don't want to have all that information aggregated and put into a public record. So where does that leave us? Well, let's leave the hypothetical world that we've been in and come back to the real world. Where it leaves us is, we have a petitioner who has a project where he is unable to satisfy the city's requirement in the way that the city wants it satisfied, but can rebut the presumption in other ways, and maybe has a lot of information that could help do that, but we don't want to do it in a public forum for all the reasons that I've just laid out for you. So what's the solution? I think it's pretty simple. It's easy. It's clean. We can do it soon. We can do it soon. The solution would be for you to approve the precise development agreement and leave this part of it to another time. The other time being when we come back for the demolition permit. Allow the applicant to talk with staff, and I'm sure the city attorney would want to be involved as well, and figure out a way where we can present the rebut, we can rebut the presumption with overwhelming evidence in a way that preserves everyone's privacy. It does not make public things that people have no interest in being made public and does not put the applicant at the mercy of people who don't even live in his property anymore. So that's the idea. That's what we would like to do. The format would be to bifurcate what we're doing tonight with the precise development agreement from these other issues and allow us to work with staff over some period of time to satisfy staff that we can rebut the presumption. And then they can report back to you at a later date or perhaps even just administratively that they've been satisfied that the income levels are what, are what we say they are.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this time?
It's too late, I know.
I have one question. When's, when's the last time the property was occupied?
Sometime fall of 2024, I believe.
And was that all units or just one?
I'm sorry?
Was that all four units or just one?
So it was around the time of the sale, the, all units were vacated.
So it was sold in August 2024?
I think it was the fall of 2024.
Okay.
And just to add a little specificity, the solution we're proposing is a very short phrase in Condition Four of the resolution. It's in the letter that was submitted for the record if there's any question about exactly what we're, we're asking for.
The letter was sent to your email. It wasn't sent through.
And Commissioners, I can clarify if you don't have a copy of the letter in front of you. If you go to the city's agenda website, open up the agenda, it is attached as a public comment to the item. Thank you. All right. If there are no more questions of the applicant at this time, then I will open up for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to speak on behalf of this item? Reminder, you have three minutes. Seeing none, I'll see if there's anyone online.
There is one online participant wishing to speak. Nancy, you can go ahead and speak.
Hi, sorry, it's Nancy Schwab back again. I live a block away from this project. I'm very familiar with it. All the neighbors support our neighbor who is seeking to redevelop it. But I would like to put on the record, there were two surface parking spaces. And so they're replacing two garage spaces with two, two surface spaces with two garage spaces, which is fine, but there were two off-street parking spaces. And also, I think they understated the amount of open space that was available. But, you know, again, we don't care. We would really like to see this development proceed. The former tenants, all of whom were friends and neighbors, were asked to leave at the end of September 2024 under circumstances many of them found unhappy. That wasn't the current applicant's fault. The current applicant didn't have anything to do with that. But that's the reasoning. So I just wanted to go on record for my neighbors to say we support this and my former neighbors to say they are not trying to extort anybody, they just have bad feelings about this. Just felt I needed to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
There are no other online participants wishing to speak.
All right. So before I close the public comment portion of the hearing, does the applicant want, wish to address any of the public comments?
Yes, I, I think the, the public commenter may have been thinking the encroachment area was, was surface parking, that it was illegally used as parking. And it's, it's city property, it's not open space, it's not parking.
Thank you. Any further comments for the applicant before we close the public comment portion of the hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and deliberation. Commissioner Hoffman, since you missed out on the last one.
Let me do it the easy way then. Yes, I can say with great certainty that this project is categorically exempt. I also can say with even greater certain that the site is a convex slope, as is the face of the entire coastal doo in that part of our city. The problem I'm having with the issue that's being raised here, and again, I appreciate this is not, the fact that this is based upon income is ridiculous. What someone's income is does not determine whether or not the property is, the, the rent is appropriate and so forth. There, there are a lot of people in town that rent places at prices totally unrealistic to their actual incomes and vice versa. I'm uncomfortable with the idea that we would approve this with a modification of stage of, of four to leave this sort of unresolved. But at the same time, we do that routinely with other kinds of issues. We leave it up to the discretion or to the satisfaction of the community development director. And that's where I'm leaning right now. But I'm curious how my fellow commissioners are going to address.
Commissioner McNally.
I'd like to see this project move forward. I'd like to find a way to, to move forward with this. I'm still a little confused on the affordability issue. And I think that that can be discussed more appropriately after the demolition.
Vice Chair Izant.
My question to the director and counsel, are you comfortable with this proposal?
With Commissioner Hoffman's proposal or with the applicant's proposal?
The applicant's proposal that we pass this tonight and that he and staff meet to somehow work through a resolution before the demolition permit is issued, I believe, was the proposal.
Yeah, that's acceptable to the department.
All right, I'll support the project with that modification then.
Commissioner Flaherty.
Yeah, for some reason, I can't get my site back up here, but I do have some, I heard the staff mention about the current status of encroachments. There are none on board. And this is a, one of the more unique pieces of property in the entire city are none. It has a side yard lot, which is unique only to strand properties. The reason why there's three steel poles down on that walk street is because the previous tenants for 40 years would drive down a sidewalk. Some of them actually drove over the, the stairwell. But the neighbors insisted that we close that off because there was no parking on that property per se. With a, with a garage door that opened from the north side prohibited any, so cars would drive down the sidewalk around the garage and then down towards the front of the property. So my suggestion is there is a clause on Page 12 of 16 in the, in the proposed resolution. It has a mention of encroachment. There is a specific encroachment to strand properties that is unique to the strand. It was negotiated with attorneys, good God, years ago. And it has regulations that is unique to side yard encroachments, not front yard encroachments like the walk streets have. So I think that should be inserted there. I don't have the language in front of me, but it's a public works document. It's in, they already have an encroachment heading. You just insert that. It's still, it's obvious that the new fence, by the way, the, the new landscaping is excellent, the new exterior is excellent. I mean, this is a great project for the neighborhood. You heard the neighbors, one of the neighbors say that. This would, if you're going to park in that encroached area, the encroachment permit speaks to that issue. The, the way the fence, the new fence that's on the, that goes past the property line into the encroachment area, which is equal to any front yard or side yard, in fact, it murals, mirrors the house across the street, would allow, we underparked by 10 cars. I mean, there's, I think there's 12 cars supposed to park on that property if you were redeveloping with four units. It's not, but it's got two. I'm sure that front side yard will accommodate some parking without driving down sidewalks or over curbs or anything like that. So that would be my recommendation. I totally agree with Commissioner Hoffman's suggestion and others suggesting that we abide by the proposal that just been presented to us. Let them work out the details. What's the worst-case scenario? He has to have four, he has to have two units that are low-income. The rest is, I'm sure he's excited about getting four units that are market price. So I mean, there, there's no doubt about the letter that we got indicates that type of, but that being said, great project. I support it. Convex slopes work, staff did a good job on that. The fence line or the encroachment area should have a encroachment permit through Public Works based on strand property side yard, not front yard. And there won't be any more vehicles driving down the sidewalk. So it's a win-win. So I support the project. Thank you.
I intend to support the project with, subject to some changes. As we've talked about, I think the design is beautiful. I think it's, tries to preserve the, I mean, not the character of the existing building because it's so much better than what the existing building has, but just, you know, kind of fits within the context of the, the surroundings. I appreciate that we're trying to preserve the four units. Yeah, I think, you know, CECL is okay, convex slope is okay. It's just down to these two affordable units. I'm comfortable with proceeding with this being subject to verification by staff. I guess just one clarification from staff, when we typically get these projects presented to us, they have been verified, but we don't see the backup of all that verification. We just get staff's confirmation that it's been verified. Is the concern that anything that gets sent to staff becomes public record or something? I'm, I'm not connecting the two together between privacy and what we actually see in a public forum.
I think that's right. I mean, we do the income verification outside of the public process to protect the information. And we share with you the, the results of the investigation and we'll, we'll follow that procedure moving forward.
Okay. But yes, I intend to support the project subject to that, that change. And Commissioner Flaherty's suggested conditions on the encroachment permit.
Mike, would, excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
With respect to that, my, my concern is, isn't that primarily related to you can't park in the strand half? Well, if we try to apply that to this site, what we're saying is they can only park in the first half of something off of Palm or? Okay, so in other, they can't park all the way up to the stairs. Right, but I mean.
This is the only regulation that you have to deal with parking.
No, but I, I, so we just want to apply the same idea that any parking in the side yard is in the east half of that property.
Four cars in that area and still being within the guidelines of the, or close to it. Their entrance way, they have to protect their entrance way, of course, because they're two-thirds of the way into, into there. Maybe there's some exception to this, but I'm saying the only ordinance that deals with.
No, I got you. I just want to make sure what our, the application here makes sense in that site.
Is indeed a reflection of the negotiation for the strand properties, which prohibits parking too deep into the property.
Right.
Their slope, first of all, their entrance way and their slope going downhill is going to naturally do that. But there is some restriction that may be less parking than they would want to get.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I, yeah.
Or the city comes up, since this is a very unique piece of property, the Public Works people can negotiate that. I just know there are only one set of ordinance on the books today that deals with side yard parking issues.
Right.
And, or encroachment issues, not parking, encroachment. And that's the one that was modified for the strand properties.
Right.
There is a condition under the Public Works section, sorry, my, my laptop died. Commissioner Flaherty, it's on, it's condition number 16 in the Public Works section that talks about, is there a way that we could just add a word or two?
I agree. It's already in the document. It says Public Works encroachments. So you just have to add whatever language is in an existing set of rules for strand properties.
So if we were to add... Just trying to figure out if there's a way we can add a word or two to that existing condition to reference the easement document that you've described.
You're looking at condition 16?
Correct.
16, you're right. Right now, it just says, shall protect private, public, private compliance with section. There is a section where they mentioned encroachments. Yes. Okay, 13.
13, maybe.
Right. Residential encroachment is required for any non-conforming structures. But I, I, I think just the word encroachment permit, you can add a sentence and add including an existing ordinance that reflects strand properties. I, I, again, I, I know it's a document out there somewhere. And again, a front yard encroachment permit is not appropriate for this. They don't have a front yard. It's a side yard encroachment. And since there's no encroachment permit on file at all, it could be an encroachment that Public Works feels is appropriate. It doesn't have to be the strand one, which Pete is absolutely correct, was developed because of parking craziness that was happening on strand. They were driving down the strand to park in the front of lots. No one's driving up or down the stairwell anymore. So you, you just have to, has an encroachment permit that's appropriate to this property. That speaks about the park. I mean, you're going to have parking in there. The, the gate's already illustrated in their document. I mean, it looks like a sliding gate that goes across from the alley all the way in. The sidewalk, they, they even have a sidewalk illustrated where their entrance to their property is. Maybe that's the appropriate spot to stop parking.
Do you know if the Public Works Department, what do they call it? Do they call it?
An encroachment permit.
They just call, they don't call it?
Residential encroachment permit?
You know what? I, I don't want to go too deep in that because I don't remember. But I, I know it was unique to side yard issues. And it was only because side, the strand properties are the only ones in the city that had side yards. The rest of the walk streets have front yards.
Correct.
So.
Okay, so it, perhaps just to kind of wrap this piece up, if we, I mean, the record Okay, so it, perhaps just to kind of wrap this piece up, if we, I mean, the record reflects, we've had this discussion. I understand the intent of, of what you're getting at. The applicant understands the intent of what we're getting at. We would need an encroachment permit in the event that there was parking. There is a rule, an existing, um, policy ordinance resolution of some kind which describes the allowances for side yards, encroachments in side yards on walk streets.
Right.
Okay.
And it could be unique to this property because it, it has everything except a strand in front of it.
Gotcha. There was another.
And then, and then the other area we're going to work on is. And convert, what was the, what's the number?
That is, I believe it's condition of approval four. Yes. And so I believe the recommended language, Commissioner Hoffman, based on your direction and the language we got from the applicant, is prior to issuance of a building permit, if the owner does not provide evidence that none of the existing units are protected units under, under state law, subject to approval or to the satisfaction of the community development director, the owner shall execute a covenant to the satisfaction of the community development director to make two units available for rent to lower income households as defined by health and safety code. And then we get into the existing language in our condition of approval four. So that first part of the phrase is what is being modified to permit the applicant to work with staff to provide additional evidence regarding income verification to the satisfaction of the director. Does that seem accurate with your comments, Commissioner?
That's my intent, Jessica.
Okay.
And I assume that her, in the case of the covenant, her satisfaction would depend upon your judgment toward the city attorney. Okay, thank you.
Don't we have heard a motion?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
All right. Do we, uh, do we have to repeat that or do we have that? No, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote? All right, Commissioner McNally?
Approved.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Izant?
Yes.
Chairperson Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion carries. Right. All right, moving to item number eight, staff items. Can we have the community development director report?
We will be very brief. I'll just let you know that we will be having a rotation of the chair in December. And in addition, we'll be discussing, or I'll be presenting a proposed schedule for your meetings next year. And have a happy holiday in the meanwhile.
Point of clarification, does the rotation start at the beginning of the December meeting or at the end?
I would have to check the rules. I'm actually not sure. I would suspect it'd be at the beginning.
Perfect. All right. Sounds great. Okay. Do we have any planning commission comments? Or announcements? No? Okay.
I just briefly thank you for allowing me to talk tonight as much as I did. And I also want to just make one more comment. Three out of five of us had this craziness with this one zoning map. So it could be because I have this type of computer versus we didn't have one. Greg didn't have, Greg has a city computer and it showed up the correct way. I don't have a city computer. Pete has his own computer and it showed up a different map than was.
You know, but my sense, including when it keeps, when that blasted says recording started, that's because we've lost the internet. I've gained and lost the internet 10 times tonight, which I wonder if that was what was going on. It, it's been impossible for me to keep the, the agenda items up here. But it's just the internet service.
I'll say this, my computer has been the most troublesome of the rest of the guys. This is the first time three out of five of us had different information on the staff report. I'd be more than willing to buy a new computer or get a city computer and dedicate it strictly to these meetings. I certainly don't want to be leading the pack and not being able to vote or things like that. But if I need to go something newer or bigger, I would. You've never had any problems with yours, I don't think.
I haven't, but I think I'm the only one not on an iPad.
Okay.
When you're operating on the OS 2, Mike, you're, we're all aggressive. We're at 18 now. Catch up here quick.
This was built in 1844, so.
It's as big as that, as old as that house that we just approved.
It's old in your car.
Okay. All right. All right, future agenda items? The motion to approve the tentative future agenda?
Move to receive and file noting that.
Thank you.
Maybe we need to think about the timeframe for some of these items. It looks like we've got packed agendas coming up.
I do have a comment about future agenda items. Tonight proved that possibly one hour isn't sufficient to do these add-on items.
Exactly.
I'm more than willing to do earlier or even a separate meeting for items. Those are pretty big items, actually, ideas-wise as well as participation-wise. So I don't know if you want to hold two a month versus in front of a meeting.
I, I mean, I appreciate you bringing that up. It is something that I've been concerned about as just, as I'm getting situated. I feel like in the coming year at least, there's going to be a lot of substantive policy conversations. I don't know if we're going to achieve a cadence that is, you know, every other will have something ready, but we, we want to strive towards that. And we're, we're also really grappling with the state, you know, the permit streamlining deadlines. So I did kind of raise the question of twice a month, kind of commitment for a year or so. But then that also has back of the house implications and for costing purposes. So, so I'm still noodling that a little bit. I don't, maybe I can take a temperature email with the rest of you to see if they're on occasions, if you could meet at four or maybe every other month we schedule two. I don't know. Well, we can have a more conversations about that. But thank you for bringing it up.
Can you do it at the end of a meeting or do you have to do it before a meeting?
A special meeting?
Yeah, a special meeting at the end of our meeting. It can't be scheduled. Well, because we've had contests to see who could quickly end the meeting. And some of us were able to get down to rock井pellers in time, but.
So if we, the only reason why we need to hold special meetings at five is because your regularly scheduled meeting starts at six. So if you wanted, we could just anticipate longer meetings and start the regular meeting at five. But that would be inconsistent with the way the council's schedule is set up. So the clerk is really trying to harmonize all public meetings to start at the same time. So that's why we have that five o'clock special and six o'clock regular.
And then, of course, you run the risk if we do schedule, let's say, like a seven o'clock special meeting, if we go over in our regular meeting or eight o'clock special meeting, if we go over in our regular meeting, then we potentially run into issues with, you know, things not going as, as scheduled.
Yep.
Just my two cents, too.
And we saw tonight with, I guess, our contract planner, she needed to be done. So it probably doesn't, I, I, personally, but I'm like Mike and other, you know, I'm not working at this point. It would make more sense to me that we had a special meeting on an off day so that we don't have a room full of people waiting two hours for the agenda item that, you know, was scheduled at six.
Mm-hmm.
I will just say, uh, I appreciate, I don't know if these are coming to us quickly or what, but we're seeing a lot more volume in terms of projects. So I don't know if things are just getting busier or if you guys are processing them faster. So I do appreciate that we're trying to clear the docket. All right, I think there's a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner McNally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Izant?
Yes.
Chairperson Hirsch?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Exactly.
All right. Final item, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Not before we thank our chairman for the last line of lines.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm, I'm very happy to pass on the baton or the gavel.
I will.
Which I never even got, but.
I, I will say, the greatest line I've ever heard at a planning commission meeting is when you said at your first meeting, and we had a room full of people about a very excitable subject matter, and you thanked them for being here for your first meeting. It was fabulous.
And they didn't show up for my last meeting. So, all right. I think we have a motion to adjourn the meeting. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is adjourned at, or meeting's adjourned at 10:46.